EQR schedule in Lewis's report. I don't know if you.
I think it was actually in.
For example, is a multi-family studio apartment zero point six five EQR? It starts with a single family at one and then each additional bedroom zero point one five, each additional bathroom zero point five.
Right.
Additional kitchen point six five, okay. And then, I had a question about that. It's a studio apartment or a condo with one kitchen, no greater than fifteen yards per feet. Would a one-bedroom apartment fall under that category? Or is that, to me, a studio means something different than a one-bedroom, I guess. A studio is kind of a, I don't know, a single-room component.
You know, you could have very similar water consumption if you do one of those units. And you could have something in the studio that is considered probably less than a one-bedroom apartment. Typically, in a studio, you won't have, for example, a kitchen sink and a bathroom.
So it does not, it does not, a studio apartment would not apply to a one-bedroom apartment?
Because I don't want to put words in Lewis's mouth, but he's, the calculations of all the schedules.
Like I think it does.
Okay.
I didn't say that you're thinking one-bedroom. You see in New York City where they're doing that.
Right. Okay, okay. All right. And I think everyone's aware that we also received a letter from Chad Lee at Dr. Green regarding this. And I guess, one of the things I think I said last time was that we had not given anyone else an opportunity to speak here. So I would like to give people that opportunity. So Chad or Robert, or anybody else in the room, if you have an opinion about this or would like to voice it, it might be helpful or if you want your letter to speak for itself, if that's fine too.
Sure, I have too much more to ask. Thank you for doing the letter. I tried to keep sure.
In terms of the land use approval, is it?
Just ringing here, yeah.
Yeah.
Sure, thanks for reviewing the letter. Tried to keep it short and stay out of the technical weeds. The overarching principle, I guess, is that, at least in my legal opinion, and Carl will chime in if I'm wrong, the city's ability to impose these fees is not unfettered. There are legal limitations involved here. Over the past twenty years, the Supreme Court has developed a case law. It says there needs to be a rational nexus between these types of impact fees and the specific impacts felt by the city by the development. The courts recognize that development does impact the city and that the city is allowed to impose a reasonable fee on that, but fee can't exceed the specific impacts of that development. And that is not only in Colorado, that's nationwide. The Fifth Amendment of the federal constitution, of course, says that private property should not be taken for public use without just compensation. But I guess the crux of asking how much legally can we charge these guys to develop, let's ask ourselves what's fair and what's in the best interest of our economy going forward. Because as you see at the end of the letter there, I believe impact fees aren't the key. And that we should lower the bar to entry. Long-term service fees appear to be the real revenue generator for this town. So, thank you.
All right, thanks Chad. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this? Carl, would you address for the record where we are procedurally on this? I guess in respect to pending land use approvals or?
Well, we haven't, as I recall, we haven't approved land use approval that has a condition that deferred payment of the fees based on whatever action you guys took is what they were going to pay. And if you took no action, it would be the then-in-effect current impact fees related to that. There was no, from the city's standpoint, their application wasn't contingent on, you know, you didn't make a contingent on you adopting something. They can move forward, they just have to pay. There's a timeframe in that condition that they have to just pay whatever the then-adopted impact fees are. And as I recall, Andrew, you can help me on this, it got deferred to building permit and CO rather than development permit and building permit, which where it probably would have been paid.
Correct.
Yeah, so. That's where we're at.
All right. So we tackled the EQR situation first. Because I see, I mean, there's a couple of different fronts here. One is, you know, what is a fair and equitable charge for an EQR of water and sewer? And then, policy-wise, what do we do with that, with that number once we have it to incentivize, if you will, what we feel like we need more of? Do we want to have a policy that, you know, puts incentive on smaller apartments, on multi-family? Do we want to incentivize single-family? Where do we want to go with policy?
I advise fifteen thousand square foot luxury mansions.
I mean, those are the two issues, if that was correct.
Yeah, yep, I would agree. And in that regard, I guess I do have a couple of questions for Robin and for Lewis. With respect to the water system, I don't disagree with the peaking factor of about two point five, but it seems to me that that is perhaps not applicable here just from the standpoint that our water storage tanks can essentially buffer on a daily basis. When you hit that peak, our water tanks are being drawn down a little bit, but as long as our treatment plant is keeping up on a daily basis, it refills when we're off peak drops down to a peak. And so, it seems to me that, you know, we may want to not consider that, but then what I think perhaps should consider, and this is my question, is peak day demand, which would be summer irrigation use, seems to me, you know, because that's a, every day is not like, okay, at seven in the morning, I don't know, our daily peak is, but say it's at seven in the morning or six in the morning that I can take a shower. You know, we're going up to an instantaneous peak demand during that day of something, but spread out over the whole day, we're not necessarily, you know, reaching eight hundred seventy-five gallons per day during the peak irrigation months. It seems that that's when we're actually, that's when our treatment plant is having to actually operate at a higher level. Could you try to address that?
Sure. Well, good question, Mike. The wholesale infrastructure that's going on, which includes the intake, transmission line, tanks, the water tank, transmission lines, and to a certain degree, the storage tanks have to be designed for that maximum day, maximum day demand used with as two and a half times the average day demand. I would say is not a peak day, peak of the summer, it's more of, what is the average demand, say, a month of products? And that's a figure that ratios pretty much held up with the, as a good figure to use to design those wholesale facilities. Storage tanks, however, have some upper end that provides those beyond that day-to-day power demands. And there are a high state here to see the storage tanks running. That's where the.
So it's not, you're not necessarily looking at, as a peak hour demand calculation, you are in fact looking at, you know, the average, when we're taking into account peak irrigation usage, we're using about two and a half times. On average, we're using a non-irrigation.
Yeah, and that would be backed up by, if you looked at single-family house, with say, a rate of twenty-five per year bill, thirty-five per twelfth per day, figuring out what the demand for that is, it approximates that two and a half.
And I guess the next question that I have is related to the eighty-twenty split. That was, that issue was discussed in Chad's letter to us. And I don't disagree that it seems fairly arbitrary, I guess, just from the standpoint that we certainly are probably, we don't have eighty percent of our capacity of our system remaining to build or to use, I guess. And so, with respect to, I kind of think I know where we are with wastewater, with respect to water. For example, what is our maximum daily treatment capacity of?
It's eight point six five gallons a day, based on the ground volumes.
Okay, and then, what is our, I guess, max day current usage?
I don't have a maximum day, but I can give you, for example, July, last year, we had three thousand six hundred fourteen customers on the water system. Total consumption was seventy-five million nine hundred and seventy thousand.
For July, for July.
Just to compare that, in January, we had three thousand four hundred sixty-six customers. The total consumption of thirty-two million four forty-nine.
So that's about two and a half million a day at average?
Is that, is that, I'm trying to get to my calculator, so I can. It said seventy-three million, roughly? We hit.
Daily, monthly peaks between three to four hundred gallons per day.
So, so I guess, even if we then just assume that we're at fifty percent, we're currently, current users are utilizing fifty percent of the capacity of the existing system, wouldn't that be a more applicable split? It's a fifty-fifty split, and we're saying, we want to apply fifty percent of the existing system to current users, fifty percent of the existing system to new users.
I'm trying to follow along. I'm not sure what the timeframe would be, but we add another thirty-five per customer. And the customer number I gave you is all the custom.
Right, right, commercial and residential.
You answer that, you have to show the next house owners.
Well, I think it's just more of a policy question of, do we want to make new users pay for portions of the system that are currently being utilized by existing users? Essentially, which is what we would be doing if we're charging new users eighty percent of the system, but it is currently being utilized, system is, fifty percent of the system is being utilized by current users. It's just a simple policy question of, do we want to?
Yeah, but you, you, of that, you have to apply the entire system policy to the next one. You add users to process it.
Well, this is, I mean, that's what we are talking about here, is the value of the system, the treatment plant, the distribution system, the pumps, the.
If you add another user, what's the marginal cost to add users to the current yet personal? There's capital costs involved.
Well, the variable cost is taken up in the user fees. That's what our user fees are for. Well, I mean, but what I'm saying, that, for impact fees, I'm of the opinion that we shouldn't be considering operational costs with our impact. We should be looking at purely the upfront capital costs. And then, our user fees should be applied to whatever our costs of operation are. So I guess, you know, I, you know, it seems to me that it would be more equitable to put the, and then, you know, and then there's another, again, another just a policy discussion that we perhaps want to have. And that is, if our cost of entry, which is exactly what Chad indicated at the end of his letter, if the cost of entry is prohibitive and is actually discouraging for new customers on our system, is it better, take the iPhone, for example, if an iPhone costs five thousand bucks, probably going to have a lot fewer people walking around with an iPhone, but you charge three hundred bucks for an iPhone and, you know, get a hundred dollars a month in user fees, what's the better situation for the company? You know, you know, it's, it's. Yeah, so that, to me, is, I think, what we want to consider.
These fees are also like part of the equation.
Well, I don't, well, one EQR, one EQR, when we consider all of our fees, not just water and sewer, we're looking at about twenty-five grand.
That's, that's all the.
Yeah, it's water, sewer, fire EMS, you know. Yeah. Well, our current, our current EQR today, one EQR today for water and sewer is a little over ten thousand dollars. Am I right?
For the two.
For the two, for water and sewer.
So the apartment, the EQR cost would be about so.
Right, right. But then, but then you pay parkland vacation, you pay school impact, you pay fire EMS. So, so I, you know, it all adds to the cost of entry, if you would, you know.
So is the water cost? One side of this discussion that we traditionally shy away from and never really talk about is what the actual cost is. What is the actual cost to produce that thousand gallons of treated water? And water is the cheapest bargain on the planet in this community. And, you know, that's, that's something everybody expects, but is it realistic for us to say we can endlessly keep an artificial, such an artificial little point? So that's part of the revenue side of the discussion that never gets aired. And I understand how controversial it is, but if you're going to lower impact fees, you're going to make it up somewhere. How do you do that?
But I, you've actually maybe hit on it. Maybe we need to, you know, we just last, I printed them out from our agenda back in, like, I think it was July or August of 2014 was the last time we adjusted water and sewer user rates. And that might need to be reevaluated again. And it is possible that user rates may need to increase a little bit. We know that we are still subsidizing wastewater system to six hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. Was eight hundred thousand dollars a year until this year. And, and so, we're not quite there yet with user fees paying their way on wastewater. Water, I don't disagree, it's a pretty good deal. You know, we don't have what appear to me to be excessive water, water rates, but in this case, we're talking, you know, that's your hundred dollar phone bill you get from, you know, AT&T or whomever, you know, as opposed to the three hundred dollar bill for buying the, buying the phone. You know, and that, you know, the discussion, you know, here is how much we're going to charge for the phone.
I understand that.
Reevaluate again.
Thought in terms of, maybe the entire picture is something that needs to be looked at at some point here.
Can we currently do an annual review of our revenue versus our expense? Right now, it was just to call it in. If we're going to include a portion of future capital funding in that, that's sort of what the value of this is, how you guys want to do that.
And it doesn't include any debt?
It includes some debt requirement, the sewer fees. Do accounts for.
Yeah, and it doesn't seem unreasonable that our user fees should perhaps pay for a capital replacement cost, you know, because if we don't grow another EQR in thirty or fifty years, we're going to probably have to replace it.
Well, we're already starting to add another storage tank on the south end of the system.
Right, right. So, you know, and so that's, that's, you know, certainly a discussion that I think needs to, we need to handle.
If we're going to try to collect capital, needs for future projects are monthly, it's a service bill. That's a pretty big deviation for an EQR. Those rates are going to. We got, we got a bit of pushback last time we raised.
I keep thinking, at some point, shouldn't we be asking whether or not, it's a basic philosophical question, are we shifting a burden to the taxpayer to the public versus the developer? And, you know, I know there's a fine line there. You can make arguments one way, saying that, absolutely, I would be on the developer, definitely improvements, because that's how progress works. But you can also make the argument that the more users, the more revenue generates. And I guess what I would again, you know, is, or are we just going to basically pull up?
Well, there's, there's another issue too that you need to consider along with that is, I attended a housing forum yesterday, and, you know, we've got a little need in the community for, for some housing. How do we make that happen?
How do you incentivize that?
Right.
Yeah. I mean, I know from, I mean, just experience, I don't actually have this number, and I don't know if anybody does, but I can't imagine our tap fees have brought in much money since two thousand six, two thousand seven, because of the downturn in the, in the building and. Let me, let me clarify some terminology. A tap fee is the cost that you pay to, you know, the city or your own contract to actually make penetration on our main, or a service or a service. To hook on to the system, that's the tap. Whatever out-of-pocket cost we incur is what we charge. You don't have a problem with that necessarily. The system improvement fees are, are designed to, to recover the future capital costs of what that bulk impact is. The monthly service fee is what we all pay based on consumption. Right, so the system improvement fees, I guess, would be the term that, I can't imagine that number has added up to very much since at least those seven, those six. I meant to go online and look at more fund balances, our recent expenditures we have used. And I have been.
And I think, you know, well, we got a, obviously a policy issue as to what can we do to incentivize more, more housing? And in my world, if you, if you're one, affordable housing, which seems to always be the buzzword in this town and up and down this valley, the, just by the nature of the housing, the smaller, the smaller the houses, the smaller the apartments, the smaller the condos or townhomes, the more affordable they're going to be. So what would, you know, what, what can you do to incentivize the private sector to build those units? And it's always been tough up here, because it's been tough to make your numbers work, which is why you don't see very many apartment complexes. I'd always wondered, why don't, why don't we have your large apartment complexes up here? It's always been hard to make the numbers work, because the land's been so darn expensive. There's not much of its own to build apartments on, even if the land is there. And the cost of construction is extremely high up here. So at the end of the day, it makes more sense to build these things in the city where the land's cheaper, there's more of it, you can generally get, you know, a high enough rent to get your return back. So this is a difficult area to make numbers work to provide affordable housing.
That's another part of the equation.
I was just going to make a quick point, that one of the, one of the key things you said there really is that land is available. We have, we have to be thinking of going upwards if we're going to be developing it. And that's not a fun word, particularly in films.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we developed it, because we're about ninety percent of the top.
So we're really looking at, you know, what can we do? And I've been saying this for a while, and I don't know, this is a real general comment, but how do we get good at going up? How do we get good at incentivizing the private sector to build these units for us so that we're not subsidizing? I know we got a little bit of heat for subsidizing Village Green. I actually voted for it, because I thought it was the right thing to do, because it, again, to spread it out over federal, state, and local. And I thought that was a good way to provide affordable housing. You know, we got sixty affordable housing units out of that. And out of our own program, we've gotten seven in like eleven or twelve years. So I think the private sector can, can fill this void if we incentivize it.
But on the same topic, we have another one that we approved that hasn't even gotten up there.
The, out of the?
The old graves, out the old Montezl side there on West Six.
I think it's still going through, yeah.
I think they have a hard time getting started.
No, you know, I mean, you know, a good example at hand is the Lofts out there, the one on that square. That project is approved and literally is hinging on, I know, I know that we can be skeptical about that, but, you know, the bottom line is, people aren't going to invest tens of millions of dollars on a project if they're not going to get the return. And that's just the way the private sector works. And they have indicated that right now, the make or break point on this is, is our user fees. That's eighty-eight units out there. And, you know, we, we estimated, you know, they're basically just waiting it out, you know, depending on what we do. And I'm not saying we make this policy simply to address that one thing, but I think that's an example of, you know, what, what a policy might be able to address in the future. And, you know, I, I, I come down on the side of, I think that we would be better off promoting or incentivizing that kind of development. And trying to, if you want to call it subsidizing it, whatever, with our impact fees, but not necessarily with our user fees. To me, that, you know, for, for example, just take water as an example. Right now, I think the recommendation before us is to, is to charge roughly sixty-two hundred and eighty dollars, I think, for EQR for water. Is that, is that your recommendation?
Sixty-one, sixty-five.
Sixty-one, sixty-five.
Sixty-one.
Sixty-three, I guess. Okay, then.
Mine's on the wrong side. It's on, let's see, it's on here.
Page five dash nine. While you're looking at that, let me throw out another idea with regard to what you just said, and what it is, maybe what we, in terms of giving away stuff upfront, I'm not really a big fan, because I don't think you can give it to that front member of government. Perhaps we maybe look at a policy where we allow a developer to go on a payment schedule that's interest-free, and that's our contribution. Because we don't charge any interest, and you allow them to pay that impact fee over a sub-period of years in a payment schedule to allow them to go forward so that they don't shoulder that entire burden upfront. And it gives them the opportunity to begin to utilize the return on their investment at the same time being faced with smaller payments for a longer period of time to pay the impact fees. It's just a thought.
Let me throw this out to you, Stephen, and this is just a thought that I have. And I, I appreciate you willing to work with us, because I do kind of know how you feel about that. And I don't think anybody wants to give away the farm by any stretch. We all have to be diligent with the public's money here, and the public's assets. And the public has a lot of money invested in these assets, and we spend a lot of money operating these assets. operating these assets. But, but we also need to keep in mind that we do have a housing problem. I see, I see this as, as tied as close together as any two issues. I mean, these, these types of fees, the, the user fees, I actually, and I know we're not going there now, but to talk about what those user fees on a monthly basis, because that, that, that's a big number. I think it's upwards of two million dollars a year that we get for user fees. So that, like, that number gets my attention. I think our budget this year for tap fee, for, for, uh, system improvement fees is around a hundred grand. So, you know, a hundred thousand dollars isn't game-changing for the city of Glumwood Springs, but user fees are. I mean, when you start talking about adding the, the group out in West Glumwood, has a hundred and sixteen units, and this one's eighty, two hundred users, now you're starting to talk a pretty good-sized chunk of money, and that's going to be, for as long as those buildings stand, that money's gonna be generated, plus those folks are gonna be living and working and shopping and functioning in Glumwood Springs. And so I guess my point is, is if, if we were to, if you will, not give away the farm, charge a full impact fee, which is about twenty-six thousand dollars when you figure the water, sewer, fire, parkland, all that stuff, and had a number that said, you know, at this number, if you're building a house, a single-family house, you just pay full boat. I've got a project in front, Andrew's seen it, I've got a project out there right now, it's seventeen hundred square foot aside duplex, we're actually building one of those two now. You know, if you're gonna build a house of seventeen hundred square feet, these aren't super affordable places, I think you pay, pay the fee. Maybe there's a sliding scale that takes us down to a smaller two-bedroom apartment or a one-bedroom apartment that's eight hundred square feet, and we want more of those, we want more of those so that, so that a, a single schoolteacher can have an eight hundred square foot apartment, which doesn't get built in this town very often, because the economics just don't work to build eight hundred square foot apartments unless you're getting some assistance. And we're just, I mean, we're not even talking about giving, you know, like, maybe, maybe it's half of that, or, or what a whole fee would be. So, and I think we already do that, we already, I think we already incentivize that to the, like, point six-five of an EQR.
Yeah, that's what's being...
So we're already doing some of this right now. I think what I'd, what I'd like to do is, is, is clarify it, clean it up, make it somewhere, and really maybe even go just a little bit further to encourage more smaller units, which in the, which equates to affordable, and, and see if we can encourage people to build those.
I, I accept your argument on its face, but the thing that concerns me is, we've just sort of touched on it, the next round of development in this community is gonna be scraped and rebuilt, it's gonna be infill in the nature of multi-unit large structures with multiple stories, that's what I see coming.
I agree with that.
Whether you like it or not, it really, if we're gonna, if we're gonna entertain what the demographics have already demonstrated, that that full build-out of those is gonna be fifteen thousand people, we don't have a place to put five thousand people unless we start scraping some things and building some multi-story structures. So that's where my concern lies. I'm concerned that a huge project like that has a huge impact, and you can't guarantee that, I don't know how you can defensively segregate the two policy-wise.
You're talking the user fee versus the impact fee?
Well, I'm, or, I'm talking the impact fee. If you lessen the impact fee to encourage small unit development, what do you do when you have a large development that has a much greater impact all at once? How do you approach that? And, and maybe it's fair if you just do the numbers, I don't know, but it, it's a concern in my mind, because it may mean, for example, that Robbins is looking at having to redesign a whole section of sewer, he's maybe having to install a bigger water maintenance center or something of that nature. So you have a lot more associated costs, infrastructure-wise, that are not cheap, because you have to remove what's in place and put new in. So I, I have some concerns around it, that's it.
I follow that, but I think if you had a development of that magnitude, I, I think the developer would be probably footing those upfront, sewer mains, if the sewer mains weren't large enough in that area, because that stuff we do put on, I believe we would move that onto developer. So when you're just talking about these fees, those are kinda set, they are what they are. If the infrastructure isn't there, it's probably gonna be on the developer to bring it to their site. We're, we're not in the business of upgrading infrastructure for somebody's specific development. So I, I think that could be handled, and I guess so, you know, again, I'm, I'm looking at kinda killing two birds with one stone here, is, is if we're incentivizing smaller units, we're incentivizing affordable housing, we're incentivizing the private sector to provide it, we need more rentals in this town like crazy. I hate putting rentals in the, in the newspaper, we put them in the free section of the Glumwood Post, sorry about that, the free section of the Glumwood Post and Craigslist, and I mean, the phone rings all day long. I hate putting ads in the newspaper for rentals in this town, because that's all I do all day long then, is answer that call for rentals. And it's every day, and then the next day it's a whole new set of people, and the next day it's a whole new set of people. So we need, we need apartments in this town, and I've got seven of them of my own that I rent, so I'm not saying that lightly, because, you know, it'll, those, I don't think the new ones will compete with the old junk I own.
One of the things that came out of the housing get-together was that the nearest, the, you know, affordable housing line right now is at right in west.
Well, see, I'd rather have those folks up here. You know, when that, when that first Village, Glumwood Green, when Glumwood Green opened up, you know, we heard some folks saying, oh, that's gonna be, you know, I've got rentals and it's gonna hurt me.
Well, starting with Glumwood Green, it was a market rate housing development.
I was just...
The story that ran in the paper a few weeks ago, got a lot of people running around in the area.
Forgot it.
What's that? A lot in the paper, like the article that they put about, our company's not developing these, this, 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 you know, these people are excited about, you see, give away the dollars, this is just, you know, so the end of the year, and, and, these folks are like, a lot of costs involved, anything, anything, this is one. Many costs are another cost, there was a correction, there was another cost, and they wanted, this is one piece. The folks we talked to consider us a low-end fruit, we're soft target, whatever, they're not at all excited about us giving them anything, we develop, we help those, without some social benefit, nothing social benefit would be some sort of affordability structure, and that's something I can support, I can support any of this, except for Stephen's idea of minimizing some of the development, because that's an interesting, good idea. But I think giving away stuff to build market rate apartments, what is, I don't think it at all.
Can I, can?
Maybe, maybe, sorry, maybe it adds to our economic vitality, and there's more apartment, and there's, and that, but also the cost added to the city, nobody I talked to seems at all excited about this idea, we just require them to be housing today.
I, I would just...
I don't think it'd be harsh to be, there's so much of that, you know, it would cheer up.
There isn't. Yeah, yeah. And I, I guess in, in the interest of time, because I do, you know, we have twenty minutes to basically give staff some direction here, and, um, I would counter that with the social benefit is, in fact, if we can increase the supply of free market affordable, I mean, you, you got a nine-hundred square foot apartment, you're not gonna be renting it for two thousand dollars a month, unless you gold-plated it or something.
Then we're gonna need more of them.
Yeah, um, you know, and so just by its very size, I think, regardless of whether it's deed restricted, we're involved, you know, in some kind of a, a government imposition on the private property there or not, it's, just by its nature, it's gonna be affordable. And so to me, that is the, the social benefit, is that we are providing housing for teachers, for firemen, for police officers, for young engineers, for, you know, whomever. It's something that is dramatically needed in this, in this community, and I guess, just talking about water, here, here would be my proposal, and, and the actual fee that is being proposed is sixty-two-hundred-and-eighty dollars, but we're currently charging at sixty-nine, sixty-four on water. So the calculation that Louis provided on page five dash five, cost per EQR based upon industry standard flow is sixty-two-hundred-and-eighty dollars. So that would be our, our proposed EQR for water based on, on Louis's report. That's based on an eighty-twenty split, I would suggest changing that to a fifty-fifty split, and that would drop the EQR price down to thirty-nine-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars.
Well, that's a current fifty-fifty split. According to the July figures, we're at about a three-eighths to...
We're using three to four million dollars, or three to four million gallons a day, and we have eight-point-six million gallons of capacity, so we're actually less than...
Three-eighths.
Right, but, but I'm, I'm being generous, I guess, to us, you know, instead of saying, um, you know, because if, if we, if we go at a sixty-forty split the other way, then it's actually reduced it even more. And so I was just suggesting that a fifty-fifty split is, is perhaps palatable here, and then that would drop the EQR rate on water down to thirty-nine-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. And then on, on wastewater, um, I believe that, uh, the proposed rate is eighty-one-hundred dollars, again, that's based on an eighty-twenty split, it's also based on applying that eighty-twenty split to the full cost of the, the wastewater treatment plant. And so on that one, if we just took, wastewater treatment plant is currently a little over sixty percent capacity. The value of the thirty-three million dollar wastewater plant and ancillary facilities that is currently being used by, by existing users is nineteen thousand eight-hundred-and-forty-three dollars, yeah, I'm sorry, nineteen million eight-hundred-and-forty-three thousand nine-hundred-and-twenty dollars. If we reduce that out of the total value of the wastewater system, um, it would reduce the value of an EQR down to forty-eight-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars basically, um, for, for sewer. And I would, I would propose, um, uh, those kinds of, uh, calculations, and then, you know, if we, if we take that, going back to your, your money thing, we can charge whatever we want, we can charge ten thousand dollars an EQR, a thousand times zero, zero. And if, if we know, for example, that we are going to get, um, an eighty-unit project, just as an example, you know, this, this year Todd mentioned that we budgeted a total of about a hundred thousand dollars in, in impact fees that we're expecting to bring in, and that's water and sewer combined. And I don't know the, make the breakdown of, of example, a lock project, but I just use a hypothetical example of an eighty-unit project, half of which are one-bedroom, half of which are two-bedroom. With this, um, proposal, we would bring in two-hundred, just under two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars in water impact fees, and we would, in the first year, we would get an additional, and that's based on a minimum water usage fee of forty-five dollars and twenty-one cents a month, which would probably be more than that, they'd bring, bring in another forty-three thousand in water user fees, for a total, um, total revenue of two-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand dollars just in water. In wastewater, that would bring in, I'm trying to find the right numbers here, uh, two-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand dollars in impact fees, and just under sixty thousand dollars in user fees, for a total revenue of three-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah, so you would just use, use your total three-one, you know, and set that.
Well, they, they have indicated that, that that is, in this, in this instance, that is the case.
But that's a standard...
Yeah, they could also drop the purchase price of land for a couple hundred grand to, and lots of it could double it now. So this, this is, this turned into a political one.
Well, again...
This turned into who, you know, who's gonna, he's gonna eat it from the book.
How, how are we eating it if we bring in five hundred thousand dollars of revenue versus a hundred thousand dollars of revenue?
That's how they feel, they're either like, distorted, you know, that's, that's...
Well, you know what, people can feel that all they want, it's wrong, you know, so, I mean, I'm looking at it from a business standpoint of which one brings in more revenue? Do we wanna charge five thousand dollars for the iPhone or three hundred dollars for the iPhone? That's kinda what we're talking about.
Do you wanna charge five thousand dollars for the iPhone, give it ten years, thank you.
I think, I think that's a really good point, to support that, where we're at. If we, yeah, damn, I'm, I'm all for giving them all together if we're gonna buy this as some sort of affordability kind of structure.
I don't think you're going to want to give them all together, no, that's...
I, I would do that, I mean, the idea here is, like, you know, what's the social benefit? And it's not academic, I mean, the fees are the fees and the way of them in exchange for affordability, I'm not saying section eight type of affordability, but some, some assurance that these things are gonna be rented and raped to support the...
You, you're hitting on, hitting on exactly what I'm saying, but, and I'm saying, and let me, let me just throw this out for, for argument's sake. Let's say you're building a seventeen hundred square foot single-family house, you're paying full boat, hundred, hundred percent of the EQR's water sewer tap, I mean, the fire, parkland, everything, anything above that, if you're gonna go build yourself a single-family house, you just pay the fees. The, as the social benefit grows, as the units get smaller and smaller and smaller, which means more affordable, as they get more affordable, you're on a sliding scale of a little bit of a reduction in the fees, a percentage of reduction of the fees, and that's all I'm saying, is that could be...
The size and the density of units makes the new guy affordable.
Which is done by the nature of... So, so a seventeen hundred square feet rents it the same thing as an eight hundred square foot?
It's really nice, it's a, it's a special place, I don't know, I mean, you know, five hundred feet in New York City is very, very hard.
If you, if you look at doing a seventeen hundred square foot house, and the style of mine is, which is a nineteen-fifties style, been well taken care of, in today's market, it's a kind of plain Jane house, but it's very nice, versus an eight hundred square foot dwelling with an Aspen level of finish, you're gonna have five hundred square, probably maybe five hundred dollars a square foot on an eight hundred square foot house. The equation depends too much, in my view, on the goodwill of the developer, because you have no part of the policy that is enforceable to say, if we're gonna do this for you, you have to do this for us. And that's, that's, that's not someplace I feel comfortable being, because I think you're, you're just sort of saying, go, go, and I'm not willing to do it.
So you like not just tie to sport footage, but also to the monthly...
Well, there has to be some quick pro quo, in my view, Stephen, in terms of, if we're willing to do this for you, you have to, you have to give us assurance that this is what's gonna happen, and if you don't do that, then we are going to assess you full boat, or whatever the mechanism is. Somehow we have to have a, a mechanism in place as part of the policy that gives us the ability to justify to the public and to the other users who already have paid fees, the rationale behind making some sort of a sliding scale, and the sure, surety to them that if that performance doesn't meet the agreement, steps aren't able to be taken to recover those costs at full. That just seems reasonable to me.
Now, you've been sort of very, you know, I think, and, you know, you might as well choose that, that dramatically, you know, issues to make such a program, you can use all of that, and, and...
No, I, I appreciate the, I guess, desire to have some control with that, I guess, but I, I just personally come down on the other side of that, I'm of the opinion that, I, I think these fees that I've outlined here are, are defensible just on their base value. I think, you know, they're, they are, uh, simply based on, you know, I, I, you know, I'm not being, just critical of Louis's report, but I think eighty-twenty is very arbitrary, you know, and, and I don't think it's, it's rational nexus, you know, myself, so I think we should base it on, well, the value of our system is X. A certain portion of that is currently used by the current users, and so new users need to pay their share of what is left, and that's what this calculation is, so...
Unfortunately, all of the companies we pay to, for funds, all of that, right now.
Well, wouldn't it be better to get more users on that, to be financing that then? I mean, so that's the way I look at it, is we get more users, we, we certainly have the capacity of the water, we have, you know, certainly at least another twenty percent of our wastewater plant capacity before we have to start spending money.
Yes, we are, I mean, I've got some sort of, you know, information there, you know, having some sort of say in what they can, right, it's really hard to, I think, in order to, 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 about making it affordable, I think, is, part of the, I guess, I guess, to each one of them, I don't know. I think there's a social benefit here, I think it is reasonable, but there has to be an explicit contract out of the business.
I think Louis tried it.
Well, no, it's, I'm sorry, it's eight till seven, and we need to convert the room for your meeting. And I just took notes on all of the options that you laid out, including the obvious ones. The most obvious is status quo. The proposal from your data expert suggests, um, you know, rational nexus where water fees decrease, wastewater fees increase. The only specific proposal new tonight was the fifty-fifty split.
That was, that was just on water. Yeah, sorry, the, the sewer is a little different, because, um, I, I actually, I left the eighty-twenty in on all the wa- wastewater infrastructure except for the sixty percent of the value of the wastewater plant. I just took that out of the value and said that's on my existing users, so that was my, my calculation.
Let me throw this out, just, I'm just asking a question. Are we, are we there yet? Do you have enough information to report, or do we need more time like this?
No, what I'm saying, I think you do need more time like this unless you direct otherwise, and what you now have are a list of choices, and the other choices mentioned tonight are no changes in the fee, or pay as you go, um, and sliding scale, and I would offer two others. If you're, first of all, there've been these references, like, if we're talking about eighty units or whatever, I think it's completely appropriate to specifically mention DAD units, uh, and, that have already been approved pending the modification, if any, of the condition-related fees. I don't think you have to talk about it in the abstract, because you've already had every possible public hearing on it, everyone knows that's part of this discussion. So, I do think, though, that you can't make this decision just looking at that because of the other policy considerations, and I was on the panel that, that was referred to yesterday, you have a wide range of options, and there are some fundamental policy questions about whether or not government should subsidize housing or create affordable housing, either from the developer's side or the tenant-owner's side. You've got a wide range there. And when we bring these choices back to you, I will include something that if what you're, if what you're trying to do is to create an incentive to build units of a certain size, and that you need this housing now, there are, I'm sure lawful parameters that are time-bound, and you say, we're going to do this, and this is the break on the free, but these units must be built by thus and such a date. You know, twenty-five percent have to be built by then, the next twenty-five by then, whatever, that's kind of a sliding scale, different presentation of it. And then, you know, the other, the other side is considering what the, what the wastewater treatment system is. You know, you've heard wholesale, retail, and enterprise fund, and looking at it as a business. And the analogy that I discussed with Louis earlier today is that of a successful business partnership. So, all the citizens of the community get together, and they invest their shares, and they build this business, in this case, a wastewater treatment facility. And you want to take in another partner, it's a philosophical question whether you want your new partner to contribute anything to buy into that system or not. I'm not telling you which way to go, I'm just telling you that's the, those are the facts, and you have, you know, you have one side saying absolutely, you have another saying no, it would be better just to get this partner, because we're going to get more customers. And I would like to take the map that you have and distribute it to everybody in advance, along with these other options, and then you really need to decide, you know?
So, you've got enough baby down to give us three or four options, where we want to go, and then we can actually get to a point of a decision?
Well...
We've been talking about this, this is our third meeting that we've been talking...
I think it's a robust and valuable discussion, personally.
Yeah, I agree.
And, but, not so much three choices, it's more like, you know, maybe five, maybe six.
And what time frame are we looking at?
A couple weeks. I think you could do it. I don't know what we're scheduled for. Either February eighteenth or the first thing in March. It should be our best, if you can send us your numbers. And this is just my suggestion, you can do whatever you want.
True.
And just think, like...
Well, I think we need to get something concrete down, that we can all look at, and yes or no. Yeah, we, we like that, no, we don't like that. We don't want to make any changes, yeah, we want to make a change, because we can talk about this and talk about it, and...
If you want to force the question, then skip the work session and just schedule, schedule this matter, and I don't know what the notice requirements are for changing fees, but follow the notice requirements, get it before you as soon as possible, and vote. And you can just devote a lot of agenda time, so we won't be talking, we'll be just deciding, and if you need more time, you continue it.
Well, wouldn't, um, you know, I'm thinking about that option, I, I would anticipate it would have to be another meeting anyway, just because at that meeting, we would ultimately decide what might be an ordinance to change the fees, right? So, I, I think it's probably better off, let's just, as much as I, just hoping to get it done tonight, let's just plan another one session at the first meeting in March with the latest drafts, and February, whatever meeting.
If, if I can, do you want to do that? I, I guess I would sort of echo Drew's comments on not that it necessarily puts you in a position that you can make that decision, but, um, does the pressure of...
Yeah, it was a regular agenda, I don't...
Yeah, that's, I was going to say, I think maybe a regular agenda item to sort of force you forward, um, because I, I mean, I hear a lot of, I think you guys understand each other's philosophy, I think you just need to, and maybe in the context of a regular agenda item, to give clear direction to us that you can take action on and say, this is the ordinance we want you to bring back incorporating these things.
This happens at the next meeting?
Having, having some publicity, you know?
Yeah.
Which allows us to say, to make multiple motions, not like who I did.
Right, I just, I, I think it's a way to, for us to advance it.
We need to be the eighteenth through the third, and we try to be eighteen, but the other thing that you need to consider is, uh, it did sound lawful to me, both from Chad's memo, and I think from Carl, and even Louis's document, that if you're targeting a particular category to incentivize, you know, and you're very specific about that, you're not locking yourself into low fees for every other category. But it's, like, you know, there's a logical nexus. The nexus is, you, you could take the entire transcript from last night's affordable housing as your basis for trying to incentivize a class of housing. And you can do that in a couple of different ways, and reducing fees is one way, there, there are other ways, so I'd like to bring that back to that.
Okay, all right. Thanks, you guys.